Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Connors?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Saxer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Palzinski?
Here.
Thank you all for being here. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation given by Bettendorf Police Chaplain and Pastor of Hope Baptist Church Pastor Mark Cannon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Pastor.
Remain standing, let's bow our heads. Father, we are grateful for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you've given us as a city, as a country. And we thank you for these that are gathered here today, tonight, for this meeting, to progress the needs and the issues that our city faces. I pray, Father, you'd bless our council, watch over them, and guide them in their governance of this city. And, Father, our hearts tonight turn to our firefighters. We're grateful for them. This is a joyous occasion, it's a glad occasion. And, Lord, I pray for these firefighters, Akers and Logan and Martin, as they assume new positions in this department. I pray you'd prosper them and give them wisdom. I thank you for this department. I pray, Father, that this fire department, our first responders, would fully know the gratitude of this city for their service. And may we be careful to express that to them. Bless them, keep them, watch over them as they serve. And we pray these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Then, Pastor Mark, thank you. Thank you also for being a police and fire chaplain. Okay. Kind of apropos, as we move into the next item on our agenda, which is our Fire Lieutenant Promotions. And for that, we welcome firefighter Todd Akers, firefighter Sean Logan, firefighter Mike Martin to the front, so that we can promote you to Lieutenant.
Come right on over here, all three of you. Mark here with us, thank you very much for being here.
Yep.
Thank you all for being here in support of these three new lieutenants. As they are now part of the leadership team of the department, we thought it was fitting that they be brought up in the limelight, because they will be in the limelight. A lot of times, they will be the face of the department, and both at work and off duty. So, I have a few words that I prepared, and they also had a little bit of an assignment to prepare some information for me to review and keep what I wanted to keep of what they mentioned, so. So, it's really my privilege and honor to be here tonight and see these promotions take place. It's been a long time coming, as you'll hear from some of the time that these personnel have been on the department. But they are a select few of our department personnel who have prepared themselves for promotions, and they happen to be the ones that are the appointed ones at this time. I'm proud of each of you and your commitment to doing your best in serving the community, serving the department. And each of you now join the department's leadership and plays a much larger role in developing the firefighters of our department and continuing to shape the future of the department. Leadership means having self-confidence to believe that you can make a difference, having the passion to believe that it matters, and the courage to make changes. Leaders are not defined by their popularity, but by their willingness to move forward, their willingness to share credit, their strength to admit errors, their willingness to share credit, whoops, their willingness to pick themselves up and keep leading and motivating others towards fulfilling the role of the department and the city. Congratulations.
Mike, Todd, Sean, and then we'll have your family come up and pin the badge. All right. So, we go with Mike first. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Mike Martin. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties as Fire Lieutenant.
Discharge all duties as Fire Lieutenant.
As now or hereafter, required by law.
As now or hereafter, required by law.
Congratulations.
And I'll give some quick words about Mike Martin, Lieutenant Martin. He has 16 years on with Bettendorf Fire Department as a career firefighter. He started as a resident volunteer firefighter for our department. Actually, all three were volunteer firefighters with a couple of different departments, departments, two with our department as resident volunteers, and one with a different department. He has worked at all three stations and was part of the first crew to work out of the Story Heights Fire Station as a resident volunteer, or as a paid person. Last year, he received a letter of commendation for a rescue that he was part of, along with Brian Moriarty and John Crump. He has been with the University of Illinois, Illinois Fire Service Institute for 12 years as an instructor of confined space, rope rescue, and basic firefighter academy. He has been on the MABUS 43 Technical Rescue Team as a rescue tech, squad boss, and assistant team leader. And last year, he was appointed as the team leader for technical rescue for MABUS 43.
Congratulations, Mike. Raise your right hand.
I, Todd Akers.
I, Todd Akers. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties as Fire Lieutenant.
Discharge all duties as Fire Lieutenant.
As now or hereafter, required by law.
As now, hereafter, or required by law.
Fantastic.
Todd's been with Bettendorf Fire for almost 28 years. He started in October of 1995, after one year with the Hampton Volunteer Fire Department. During his time on the department, Todd has accomplished many things and has worked on all three shifts, just like Lieutenant Martin. He has obtained many certifications and has been in charge of several programs along the way. Todd was the public education coordinator for several years, played an integral role in the establishment of the current Public Education Puppet Show that we're using in the schools. Todd has been a fire investigator for the department for the last 10 years. He has also participated as tactical medic on the Emergency Response Unit of the Bettendorf Police Department. In June of this year, he will complete his Managing Fire Officer Program at the National Fire Academy, and will graduate from that. So, congratulations.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sean Logan.
I, Sean Logan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of Fire Lieutenant.
Discharge all duties of Fire Lieutenant.
As now or hereafter, required by law.
As now or hereafter, required by law.
Congratulations.
So, Sean started his firefighting career with us as a volunteer resident firefighter for two years, and then was hired in 2012 as a career firefighter. In the 10 years as a career firefighter, he has obtained many certifications, attended classes such as hazardous materials technician, technical rescue technician, Instructor One, Rapid Intervention Team, Under Fire, basically save your own for firefighters, and Swift Water Training, Fire Ground Officer Training, and several others. He is currently part of the Bettendorf Emergency Response Unit, is that correct, as a TMS tactical member. And then, he's also on the Deployable Team for the MABUS Technical Rescue Team. So, he works closely with Mike Martin, Lieutenant Martin. Lastly, along with Sean's history of continuous education and certification, Sean believes that the firefighters whom he has had the privilege to work alongside of, and the officers he has worked under, have helped him to prepare to become a lieutenant. So, congratulations.
Family members who are going to come up and pin the badge on these gentlemen, would you please come up here, lieutenants? We'll have your family members come pin the badge. I think it's important to say thank you, not only to the families who support these individuals, but to the family here at Bettendorf who supports them. And you can see by the turnout tonight how important it is for everybody to support these lieutenants, as well as the new folks coming on board, and bring them into the family. So, on behalf of the city council who believes passionately in public safety and service, thank you. You all mean a lot to all of us, and we understand the risk you take every day. While we don't live in your shoes, we support you as much as we can. If there's anything that we can do, please let us know. Family, come on up and let's pin a badge on these deserving lieutenants. Give them one more round of applause. And Lieutenant Martin, if you could introduce your family?
Oh, yeah. My amazing wife, Toni, my oldest son, Nolan, our little, our middle son, Leo, and our youngest son, Bob.
This is my wife, Dana, and I do have my parents, Wendell and Helen, sitting in the back, back there, my son, Cade, and my mother-in-law, Carol.
With me here tonight is my wife, Kayla, my son, Colson, and my daughter, right back there, Brynlee, born with my mom, my brother, and my wife's family is all here, so.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Thank you, sir.
If you want that. Oh, here, I gave you Todd's. I got yours, too. Jonathan, you too. Hi, Jonathan, welcome. This is Kidney Awareness Month and World Kidney Day, and we have a proclamation. And for our proclamation, Jonathan, Napolitano, am I saying it right, Jonathan? Napolitano?
Napolitano.
All right. As the Community Outreach Manager for the National Kidney Foundation, serves Iowa and Nebraska, and we're glad that you're here with us, Jonathan. I have for you a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. We'll wait just a sec, because we have some of our firefighters on the way out, and we'll be able to be heard more clearly here in just a minute. All right. A proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas one in three adults in the United States are at risk of chronic kidney disease. In fact, 37 million adults in the United States are estimated to have chronic kidney disease, and approximately 90% don't even know that they have it, which is scary, as I look around the room, if there's 90% of us. Sorry. Whereas, risk factors for kidney disease include diabetes, high blood pressure, heart disease, obesity, and family history. Early detection and treatment of kidney disease could result in fewer people requiring dialysis treatments and/or transplantation. And whereas, the National Kidney Foundation is the largest, most comprehensive, and longest-standing patient-centric organization dedicated to the awareness, prevention, and treatment of kidney disease in the United States. For more information about National Kidney Foundation, please visit www.kidney.org. Now, therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the Mayor of the City of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as Kidney Awareness Month and March 9th as World Kidney Day in Bettendorf, and I encourage all citizens to educate themselves on the risk of, on the risk factors associated with kidney disease, and bring attention to this often overlooked health crisis. And we welcome Jonathan. Please, Jonathan, you have the floor. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the City of Bettendorf and to everyone on behalf of myself, the National Kidney Foundation, and everyone affected by kidney disease. The mission of the National Kidney Foundation is to revolutionize the way that we fight preventable kidney disease, accelerating the innovation for the dignity of the patient experience, and dismantling the social inequalities in kidney care, dialysis, and transplantation. And our vision is to enhance the lives of everyone with or at risk of being affected by kidney disease. Thank you.
Thank you for your good work, and we're pleased to be able to provide a proclamation on behalf of National Kidney Day and Kidney Awareness Month. I wanted to get that right. Kidney Awareness Month. So, thank you for joining us today, Jonathan.
Thank you.
You betcha.
We're going to take a picture, Jonathan, so smile. One, two, three. Very good. Thank you both.
Gentlemen, how are you? Thank you for being here, both of you.
And your lovely wife.
Her friend from the business, right? You're running, she's going to be in charge.
That's right.
Our National Liver Day is April 9th.
Let's, we're going to work on that, too, I guess. Speaking of getting scared. Okay, public requests of council. If there's anybody here who wishes to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda, you can do so by approaching the podium. In the back, we'd like to hear from you. I think I know why all three folks are here. We'll close public requests of council, move to our first public hearing. This is with regard to the 2023 Street Resurfacing Program. Brian, you want to give us a quick update, although we're pretty aware of this program?
Thank you, Your Honor. The proposed improvements consist of removing the existing asphalt pavement, pavement, fold-up patch or HMA pavement patches, handicap accessible ramps at all the intersections. This street, we are targeting five particular streets. Brown Street from 16th to 18th, Crow Creek Court, Harmony Drive and Hill Press Drive to Spruce Hills Drive, Southampton Drive from 2900 Southampton to Windsor Drive, and Westminster Drive from 3118 Westomer Drive to Davenportshire Drive.
There you have it. Any questions for Brian before we work on our public hearing? Okay, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open our public hearing with regard to the 2023 Street Resurfacing Program. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close that public hearing and move to the resolution. Councilmember Brown, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plan specifications in form of contract for the 2023 Street Resurfacing Program. I move approval of this resolution.
Second. Any discussion on the item? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
All right. Brian, we unanimously passed the 2023 Street Resurfacing Project. We're 12 for 12, buddy. We've never let you down. Every year, we pass that program. People want good streets. All right, let's move to the Davis Street Reconstruction Project. Brian?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is just removing and replacing the existing concrete street in its entirety, putting a subdrain base underneath it, drain tile, and reconstructing all the driveway approaches on this particular section of Davis Street from Crow Creek Road to 48th Avenue.
Fantastic. Any questions for Brian before we move to the public hearing? Yes. Councilmember Connors?
Do you anticipate any utility conflicts with this project?
Not with this particular project, Alderman Connors.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Let's move to the resolution, please. Councilmember Connors?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plan specifications in form of contract for the Davis Street Reconstruction Project from Crow Creek Road to south of 48th Avenue. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion on the item? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
We move to our next public hearing with regard to the Nathan Court Reconstruction Project. Brian?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is just reconstructing Nathan Court from Stonehaven Drive to the east, to the dead end of the cul-de-sac, just like the previous project, removing and replacing the existing concrete. One of the things, too, though, Alderman Connors, that has brought your attention, prior to us doing any street reconstruction project, we actually sent cameras down all of our sewers. We talked to the utility companies as far as trying to identify any water main breaks or utility issues prior to doing any reconstruction project. And in this particular case as well, there is no conflicts.
Any other questions for Brian on this? Brian is our Public Works Director, Brian Schmidt. Got to be a little more formal on council nights. I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public, public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right. Can we please move to the resolution, then? Councilmember Nauman?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a resolution approving the plan specifications in form of contract for the Nathan Court Reconstruction Project from Stonehaven Drive to the end. I move approval of its, of this resolution.
Second. Any discussion on the resolution pending? Hearing none. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
The next item on tonight's agenda is also a public hearing with regard to the vacation and conveyance of excess right-of-way. 2024 Shaker Court. Our Director of Community Development, Mark Hunt. Mark?
Yeah, just a reminder, Your Honor.
We heard about it, but please, yep.
Yeah, just a reminder, this is about 2,200 square feet of right-of-way in what was going to be many years ago a cul-de-sac that never got built, never will be built. Literally, the alignment wouldn't work now. And one of the private, adjacent private orders needs a little more off-street parking, which is a good thing. And so, it's here for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mark? Okay. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
As usual, you are 100% on your publication notices. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's open the public hearing, please. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a, have a resolution approving the vacation and conveyance of excess right-of-way, generally located at the east end of 2420 Shaker Court. I move approval of this resolution.
Second. Any discussion, ladies and gentlemen? Hearing none. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
All right, so far, we're unanimous. We move to a second reading of an ordinance for Councilmember Saxer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the second reading of an ordinance adjusting the rates for stormwater utility, sewer utility, and solid waste enterprise activities of the city. I move approval of the ordinance at its second reading.
Second. Any discussion here? All right, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Okay, we have unanimously approved the second reading of that ordinance. We will have a third reading. Last night, we moved Consent Agenda K to our regular agenda by popular vote of the council people. We will take that up at this point in time. Councilmember Palzinski, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving a site development plan for 6125 Valley Drive, Lot 1, and Outlet A, Stafford Industrial Park, First Edition. I move approval of this resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the resolution?
Thank you, Your Honor. I ask that this be removed from the consent agenda and put on regular agenda so we could have a discussion on it tonight. It's my understanding, and I think our understanding from staff report, that the applicant knew what the rules and regulations were for developing his property, building a building addition, and rearranging fill in the floodplain. He chose not to follow the rules. I don't think that we have a building addition that was done that nobody at this point can say is going to meet building code requirements. So, I'm reluctant to approve a building that may not meet our requirements. So, I would make a motion to postpone this.
So, you want to table what was Consent K, now Resolution at number 17 on the 6125 Valley Drive. That will need a second?
Second.
With a motion and a second, there's no debate here. So, this is a motion to table. I would ask, Michelle, please call the roll on a motion to table the resolution approving a site development plan for 6125 Valley Drive.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Okay, we unanimously voted to table that discussion. The concerns that you stated, I think, are clear to staff. But if there are more concerns that any council member has, I encourage you to talk to Mr. Hunt before he then talks to the developer to see what can be done before the end. And I really appreciate Chris Townsend, Townsend Engineering, for being here. And for those watching tonight that weren't watching yesterday, Mr. Townsend has stepped in to try to help the process after the fact. So, we appreciate you. Did you have something you wanted to share? You certainly can, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Chris Townsend, Townsend Engineering. You know, obviously, my client did not follow the procedure. I agree with everything Mr. Connors said. The problem I have is that we then went to the city and asked, what do we do about this? And we're following that procedure to a T. That procedure happened to be this, that this exact thing had to get approved versus site plan, which has nothing to do with the building, approving a building. They won't even look at the building, which we have all of the documents, architectural plans, structural plans, contractor lists, everything you need, pictures, whatever, willing to tear the place apart if we need to. They won't look at it until this is approved. So, now we just tabled it. For what? I mean, we can't get to that next step without this, according to the city. So, that's where we're a little confused, I guess, because he, you know, he agrees. But, you know, like we said last night, he paid the fines. There's things in place. He's following every one of these things now that it's out there. So, I guess we're just kind of confused on where this is heading, because now here goes another month. I mean, it's just...
Mr. Hunt, would you care to comment to help us through what might happen next? Council has voted to table it. That will be two weeks, but you're right, Chris. We're pushing it down the road for a minute. What can we do to help you? What can you do to help the developer? Gotta be a little more formal on council nights, I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, your honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, can we please move to the resolution, then? Councilmember Nomin.
Thank you, your honor. I do have a resolution approving the plan specifications in form of contract for the Nathan Court Reconstruction Project from Stonehaven Drive to the end. I move approval of this resolution.
Second. Any discussion on the resolution pending? Hearing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palzinski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Nomin.
Aye.
The next item on tonight's agenda is also a public hearing with regard to the vacation and conveyance of excess rideaway, 2024 Shaker Court. Our Director of Community Development, Mark Hunt. Mark?
Yeah, just a reminder, your honor.
We heard about it, but please, yep.
Yeah, just a reminder, this is about 2,200 square feet of rideaway in what was going to be many years ago, a cul-de-sac that never got built, never will be built. Literally, the alignment wouldn't work now, and one of the adjacent private owners needs a little more off-street parking, which is a good thing, and so it's here for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mark? Okay, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, your honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
As usual, you are a hundred percent on your publication notices. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's open the public hearing, please. Does anybody wish to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving the vacation and conveyance of excess rideaway generally located at the east end of 2420 Shaker Court. I move approval of this resolution.
Second. Any discussion, ladies and gentlemen? Hearing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palzinski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Nomin.
Aye.
Okay, we have unanimously approved the second reading of that ordinance. We will have a third reading. Last night, we moved consent agenda K to our regular agenda by popular vote of the council people. We will take that up at this point in time. Councilmember Palzinski, please.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving a site development plan for 6125 Valley Drive, Lot 1, and Outlot A Stafford Industrial Park, First Edition. I move approval of this resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the resolution?
Thank you, your honor. I ask that this be removed from the consent agenda and put on regular agenda so we could have a discussion on it tonight. It's my understanding, and I think our understanding from staff report, that the applicant knew what the rules and regulations were for developing his property, building a building addition, and rearranging fill in the floodplain. He chose not to follow the rules. I don't think that we have a building addition that was done that nobody at this point can say is going to meet building code requirements, so I'm reluctant to approve a building that may not meet our requirements. So I would make a motion to postpone this.
So you want to table what was consent K, now resolution at number seventeen on the 6125 Valley Drive.